Good morning. It's Tuesday, August 13th, 9:30 a.m. It's National Left-Handers' Day, so we understand their plight every now and then. Those...
(laughing)
Well, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us dear Lord wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Move to approve the minutes of the August 6th Commissioners' Meeting?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Changes? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And now open for public comment regarding any pending resolutions today? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed with the Andy Conrad's County Engineers' Office.
Good morning. A slow week for us. I have one resolution for your consideration.
I know.
The necessity to close Lester Road for some drainage installation.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moving second. With all the activity out there on the roadway...
Well, it's a nice time...
Everything's closed.
We get a suntan, it'd be really nice.
Oh, yeah.
Beautiful day.
Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Jeremy Senko, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
One resolution for consideration tonight, and that's authorizing the county sanitary engineer to invest the retainer of Corin Maine for the Advanced Metering Infrastructure System project in an escrow account.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Holly Muir, our human resources director. Good morning.
Good morning. On our personnel changes today, we have two new hires, one in sanitary and one in transit, five rate increases, one in sanitary, one in commissioners, one in transit, and two at office for older adults, a return from leave at Solid Waste, a suspension in sanitary, and three resignations, one at office for older adults, and two in transit.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Brett Thomas, our finance director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have ten resolutions for you today, our first of which is revenue adjustment for the sale of surplus property. This is for online auctions. Totals $5,953. That's from January through July. Our second resolution for the day is print shop revenue in the amount of $5,577.53. Our third resolution today is transfers for our gasoline rotary fund. That amounts to $24,202.64. Then we move on to our grants. Our fourth resolution is the creation of the Mental Health Court subsidy grant for adult probation in the amount of $7,500. Our fifth resolution is the creation of the Motorcycle Safety Grant in the amount of $67,520.50 for the sheriff's office. Our sixth resolution is the creation of the Opioid Response Team Fund in the amount of $60,000. That comes from the state attorney general. Our seventh resolution is for an additional $30,000 for the license plate reader program. Our eighth resolution is expenses for adult probation. They are attending an Ohio Justice Alliance for Community Corrections Conference in Columbus of note simply because of its amount. Our ninth resolution is expenses for other county officials. Nothing out of town, nothing... or nothing out of state, nothing really large there. And our 10th resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $3,349,363.39.
Move to approve the 10 resolutions?
Second.
Moved in the second. Any discussion?
I just... I guess we'll have to have a conversation with the sheriff. I didn't realize we were using the Flock cameras with the license plate readers. Is that... it's been an ongoing expense?
We've had that in previous. This is for state money coming in for it.
So are they... do we know... do you know personally if they're in use right now?
I do not have an answer for that.
Okay.
There's an issue with the Flock?
Well, I've... and I haven't fully vetted it, but I've known other communities have passed on it because there's been some concern about the ownership of the data and things like that. So I'll have a conversation with the sheriff about it.
Oh, obviously. Yeah, so this is one of those...
Because it's a scanner. It actually does some scanning and retains some certain information, and there's some privacy concerns there. So... but I don't know how it's being deployed. I just... but if it's grant funds that are available, and that's what we're approving today. So I just... it was news to me. It's the first I'd seen anything on Flock, so.
So is... I guess is this somewhat in response to now that we've transitioned to only one license plate per vehicle rather than traditionally had one in the front, one in the back, that they have to have a greater precision in terms of reading the...
No, I think it's a relatively new technology, but a lot of places where you see speed cameras will have a camera that'll read that, and you can tell. I mean, there is an absolute clear benefit from a law enforcement standpoint to have that.
Right, okay, right.
But there's also a counter...
As to...
...counterfeiting concerns about privacy.
The retention of the data and utilizing it.
And who owns it. Because I think Flock in particular is one that they actually own that data, which is problematic when you start...
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah. I mean, arguably, if it's investigative... if it's an investigative resource, we'd have access to it. But if they own it, that causes some problems.
Kind of like your Apple phone with all the data everywhere you track, and then they sell the data.
Except for we all blindly opt into that.
We pay for that.
Technology, right, right.
Okay, all right. But at this point, you're okay with it?
Yeah, moving forward, the grant funds at least being available is fine.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Much more discussion on one of your resolutions than I anticipated.
That was the one that was giving us money, too, instead of ones we were spending money on, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have one resolution for your consideration. This would be accepting and awarding the restroom renovation project for this building here. The lowest and best bid came from Crown Commercial Construction for the base work only, and the amount would be $416,341.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in the second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Okay. Department updates. Phil Titterington, it's all you, all you.
You still want to get the same amount of time in just 40 minutes?
Yeah.
Well, thank you again for allowing me to present. I'll be quick. Just give you some numbers from April through June. So that's the quarter we're reporting at this point. We have 44 supportive housing units. They remain full. Still have a waiting list for those. Working collaboratively with MMHA on the emergency shelter. Continue to have those meetings and how we can partner. And moving then into the agencies that we contract with, the big ones are Ohio Guidestone, Catholic Charities, as well as Alternative Paths. Just to give you the numbers over this quarter, let's see. And just to remind you that Alternative Paths has locations in Brunswick, Lodi, Medina, and Wadsworth. Ohio Guidestone operates in Medina, but they also work in home throughout the county. And Catholic Charities is set here in Medina County, but they do have a part-time office out at St. Ambrose in Brunswick area. So through this quarter, all three of those agencies combined, they served a total of 6,012 clients. That's broken down to as 90% adult, 10% youth. Am I right? I'm... that's two. That was pretty quick. There were approximately 1,942 adults and 180 youth that are being served, receiving psychiatric services. That's of note because that's one of the higher outpatient types of treatment that is offered. There are approximately 231 youth who are diagnosed with a serious emotional disturbance, so they have intensive mental health issues and require more services. Our Youth and Resiliency Center over at Northland Drive continues to operate and provide trauma-informed care out there. The Human Services Levy that we receive, once again, thank you to all the voters there, it's instrumental, and it helps us with other things such as recovery supports. So I'll give you a little rundown on what we've seen over the last quarter. But before I do that, because obviously I'm jumping ahead here, we also have... the levy helps us fund that 24/7 crisis hotline that is operated through Alternative Paths. So through this quarter, there were 897 calls through that hotline. Eighty-six individuals verbalized suicidal thoughts. Eighty-eight... there were 88 active rescues that occurred, and that's where a hotline or somebody came out and helped that individual. There were 83 referrals that were made directly from law enforcement, so that connection continues to grow. They also operate through Alternative Paths, the Lost Team, the local outreach to suicide survivors. Unfortunately, they were dispatched 13 times during this quarter, and, you know, we've taken note, that's obviously not an acceptable number. We continue to work with not only Alternative Paths, law enforcement, other community agencies, our Suicide Prevention Coalition, and the Health Department as well, to try to figure out, you know, what we can do, other measures that might be out there to really reduce that number. Ultimately, we'd like to get to zero. Page three of three. Kathy's House is a reminder is now under the umbrella of Hope Recovery Community. They... Hope Recovery Community operates in four locations in the county, two locations in Medina, 200 Highland, as well as the farm, Wadsworth, and Brunswick. They continue to operate 365 days a year, 24/7. During this quarter, there were 210 calls to the Hope Link program resulting in individuals getting needs. So once again, the Hope Link program works in combination with the crisis. So individuals who might not need or contact crisis, they can contact the Hope Link, and they get partnered up with a peer supporter to help them walk through the process. They linked 122 individuals to detox residential treatment or recovery housing. As a reminder, they do not have funding for that. That is funding that is provided through the Adam Board, and they work in conjunction with our certified providers. They are our gatekeepers. Medication-assisted treatment is also something that is operated and helped funded by the levy. There were 98 individuals each month that received medication-assisted treatment through Guidestone and Alternative Paths. There are 12 women that are housed in our Level III Discovery Recovery House, and Kathy's House has 40 beds. So in conclusion, I think that... I know based on the support not only from the Commissioners, the community, as well as the levy, we're able to provide quite a bit of resources, diversification, and such to help individuals in need. Any questions for me?
Very good.
Nice.
Good report.
Thank you.
Very good.
Nice, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Let me see. Commissioners' Resolution, reappointing a member to the Medina County Home Advisory Council. That's... reappoints Melanie Gardner to serve on that position with her term expiring August 19th, 2027, and we appreciate Melanie's willingness to continue serving on that advisory council.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in the second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And we do have a notice of a liquor permit filing. We've received notice of a liquor permit transfer from GetGo Operating LLC, doing business as GetGo, located at 3080 Medina Road, Montville Township, to Riser Foods Company, doing business as GetGo. This is for a C2, D1, and D6 permit classes. This not... Commissioner's not requesting a hearing, just a notice as being provided for the record. All right, and that's it. So open up now to public comment. Stan, you have anything? Or... okay, very good. Let me see. Let me think. I know we're going to be talking about... last week, we talked about the Western Reserve Land Conservancy. We do have Zoltan Kovacs here. Zoltan, did you... who's the property owner that involves that. I did offer the opportunity to be able to speak, and Zoltan, if you wanted to come up, did you want to make it... say, make any... I know you provided us with a detailed correspondence regarding that, that we will obviously include in our record in reviewing this request. So did you want to make any other comments?
Yeah.
Please, please.
So again, I'm Zoltan Kovacs with Lampian Enterprises. We own the property there in Sharon Township, and part of the consideration here is that roughly half of the property is zoned industrial, and the proposal is to basically sell the property to the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, who would go into conservation efforts, kind of restore it into a natural habitat. And I know the county doesn't want to lose the industrial tax base, but right now, we operate on the front roughly 10 acres of the property, paramelectric, where the business operates in the front of the property. The back property is kind of because of us, it's kind of landlocked, so it's going to take a special type of buyer to... industrial buyer to buy it. We had entered into purchase agreements over the last... since we purchased it over the last six years with a couple of industrial buyers, but it just kind of... both of them fell apart because of a lack of support in the community. A lot of the concerns we heard is that the neighbors were concerned about anything industrial going in there. They're afraid of losing the rural character of Sharon Township, all that kind of stuff. So, you know, hasn't been a lot of strong interest from industrial buyers. Like I said, there's, you know, the occasional somebody that wants to take a leap and be tucked behind somewhere else, but those are few and far between. So when this opportunity came up with the Conservancy, we thought it would be a great... a great transition. The neighbors would like it. There wouldn't be any disruption, traffic, dust, noise, all the things that people are concerned about with industrial property. So what we're hoping for is the support of the Commissioners for the resolution put forth by the Conservancy. I know not having the support from you guys doesn't necessarily hurt us, but having your support would help the cause, so that's what I'm here to ask for.
All right, very good. Thank you. Questions or...
I thought your email was very thoughtful and comprehensive and gave a lot of really good information.
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification from you, and then also some of the word we've received back from the trustees, which does comply. Not that... I didn't have any expectation that Western Reserve wasn't being straight with us when they were here last week either. I just think we have to be very thoughtful and really actually strategic when we're looking at a decision that implicates previous zoning decisions, you know, and also the tax base. But in this case, I think it's, you know, we want to respect the local township's rights to make their plans from a zoning perspective, and I'm a big supporter of, you know, the local zoning trustees do. But at the point where they've kind of identified the unique circumstances that make this one a difficult, you know, path forward, I think we need to listen to them in that regard, too. But, you know, I think we're just kind of taking a pause as appropriate or was appropriate to gather some additional facts, and so I hope... I appreciate your willingness to come forward and share some of those facts. So I'd be inclined to, you know, at some point reconsider our next step as far as Western Reserve's concerned.
I would, too.
Yeah. I think we can continue to review this. I know that we're not in such a timeframe. We have to decide today. But obviously, the... by the time, they need some guidance here within the next week or two. I did, and I know some of us have talked individually, I talked to all three of the trustees, as well as I talked to Kathy Ockerman Superintendent and Neil Burns Treasurer with Highland Schools, and get their input on this. And they kind of... but I guess declined to put anything official in terms of communications, but they just... they do... they do... I'll just say more in the loss of potential industrial development. Certainly from their tax base, they would like to see it. It represents about 14% of the industrial land, that industrial property that is zoned within Sharon Township. But it appears that even though their comprehensive plan says all industrial property should remain intact, this is one of those parcels that I guess might be considered the exception to the rule for various reasons. And it's not that you have made a valid attempt, as the various property owners, to try to utilize it as designed. It just shows one of the anomalies of township growth that has occurred, that we allow land to continue to be zoned in a particular way. All decisions and the public officials, like Economic Development Corporation, and what Commissioners' decisions even have made, are predicated on that that zoning classification means something. And there's a quote that I... there's... actually, it was Clifford Brown, who was Appeals Court... Appeals Justice, said in Ridley versus Wadsworth in 1986. I was doing a little bit of research in preparation for a presentation. I'm doing this. "In my view, the proper purposes of zoning is to ensure the growth proceeds in an orderly and harmonious manner. In fulfilling this purpose, zoning should intrude on private uses of property as little as possible. It should not be utilized, as it too often is, as a method of foreclosing uses which local authorities deem undesirable for their own private reasons or for reasons that are basically meaningless." And my suggestion that this is the meaningless, but it's one where there's that balance that you have to apply in each of these cases, as courts do. And this is one why we have asked for more information before they proceeded. We know we have other requests for support going on in other parts of the county for doing the same grant of industrial property. So I think what we're trying to do is establish a process where we review these and look for the implications of all the affected tax base. And this is... this is one where I'm willing to say, yeah, although it is zoned industrial, with all the proposals that you've had and the not... the lack of inclination on the part of the community, whether it be the residents or the township or the zoning commission, to support it, just says that we have that incongruity. And it just, at this point, it seems for your position, you really have little other options. And I understand if I was a property owner, probably be the same kind of, I guess, feeling the dilemma is there and in a sense of, well, we've got to do something. And you're right, it is somewhat of a... it has a potential, but it's not one that the community zoning reflects at that. And given the nature of it, I'm also inclined to continue...
So should we put it on for resolution next week, then?
Yeah, we could. We could put it on for next week.
And for what it's worth, the front 12 acres there?
Yeah.
Operating or company?
Right, oh, yeah.
Yep.
Understand. But...
And did you say something about you might be carving off some additional for future expansion, or was that a previous plan?
We're through the prime, as we're going to keep a handful of, probably about four acres that we're not already... haven't already cleared.
Yeah, right.
So just...
So that could become more productive?
Yeah, for us, for future...
Well, that part will remain in the tax base.
Yeah.
The question is that that future development. I think that just demonstrates, I think, a need within our various communities, given all the... we've had a huge residential growth. And all of the tax bases or all the communities are looking as to how do we balance this? How do we... we've got all this residential growth. How do we provide those services without having a tax base for us to be able to help support those services, being industry and commerce? So I think that whenever you start having a proposal that takes that much, takes some significant part out of it, you ought to have more of a public discussion.
Yep.
And I think that was the reason for us withholding it. Normally, I'd... we'd be voting for... if this was residential property, we'd go, oh, heck, yeah, let's go ahead. It makes sense. But unfortunately, their community plan, their zoning showed otherwise, so we ought to at least step back and talk about it.
There were two critical factors there for me, which, again, and as we talk about maybe a path forward to make this more consistent. So because certainly nobody's, you know, intent on singling any particular project or situation out. But the two things that struck me were that the loss of tax revenue, which we talked about last week, talking a little bit about this week, and the fact that the purchase funds were public dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Because when you're using public dollars to acquire property, and the net result of that is that loss of tax base, we just have to tread carefully on that and make sure it's in a place and a situation that isn't going to cause a lot of future problems.
And I think, as being the chairman of Enrak and our methodology, I've talked to one of the other members of our... from our local on that process, our methodology and our scoring system never took into consideration the loss of tax revenues. It was just assumed that this was going to be residential property that was going to become open space. And here you have now increasing use for looking at commercial and industrial. That does enter the issue. Should you be using public dollars to undermine your own tax... the tax base?
Right.
And not look at the long-term consequences. As we get more residential growth, somebody's got to pay the taxes. And even with the... and this is a small parcel. I mean, you're only about 60-some acres, but there's always that inside village that has to be calculated out, and that if this acreage is not paying taxes, well, that just puts the tax burden on everybody else. So in the long run, it's... maybe it's a death by a thousand paper cuts, but still, it is significant. We ought to be talking about it. But I would agree that we ought to be shifting forward and say, this, in these circumstances, with this specific instances, it just makes sense to be supportive of it.
And for as difficult as it can be, and you've experienced it unfortunately, and I do think it is unfortunate, but, you know, it's difficult as it is to get existing zone... properly zoned property developed for commercial uses. It's that times a pretty big multiplier to change uses that have previously been residential or non-industrial to replace that land if we've got to go into the future and say, oh, we need to replace this land with more industrial because we lost it here, so we need to put it in here. Those conversations, nobody wins when those things become public debates.
Well, and I think, too, as a lot of our communities, that we do have a fund that we've put in planning services to help assist communities in their planning efforts. And I think there ought to be a much more mindful and reasonable way to approach these decisions, recognizing there's a consequences. As much as we love parks and we love conservationism and open space, there is a cost to that, that the community's going to... and taxpayers, the household's going to have to bear, especially as we grow in our residential development. And we're seeing a lot of that.
Yep.
Because of just what's going on in the market. So I think those are other issues that we can certainly support good, reasonable growth management and planning, but this is one where obviously... but I do appreciate you spending the time coming here, as well as communicating very clearly the circumstances, so that we can make, I think, a reasonable and informed decision about whether to support it.
And I'm also glad the timing didn't throw anything... any major, you know, monkey wrenches into the...
Well, fortunately, they came in early, rather than towards the latter part of September, when the grant is due. So it gave us some time to look at it, rather than rush.
So we're going to put it on the agenda for next week?
Yeah, if you're in agreement, we'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Yep.
All right, super, all right. And then, of course, that'll afford anybody else the opportunity that want to come forward then. Likewise, before, we would act on that to have some input. But I do appreciate it. I think it's very persuasive, and informs us a whole lot better about this particular grant request.
Thank you.
Super, great. Thank you, thank you. Since we're starting discussion, Chris, do you have?
I do. Couple things, if I might.
Sure.
First is, we drafted... Matt has actually drafted a memo to go out to all the building users here, this building, regarding the anticipated commencement of the paving project here at our parking lot. We thought it was going to be beginning... was to begin August 26th. I was just told that it's pushed back a week. It'll begin Tuesday, September 3rd, the day after Labor Day. So this is kind of an instructional memo to the current occupants of the building explaining the project and the inconveniences that they will temporarily experience as a result of that project going forward. It's going to be a two-phase project. First phase, again, will be the Liberty Street lot and part half... about half of the other lot here. And then Phase Two will be the front part of this lot that faces the building. So we're trying to assist people in how to navigate over the approximate two-month period that this project will entail. We're also going to reach out to the neighbors here and let them know that parking will be limited, and that we would appreciate that they not use our parking lot for purposes of daycare, drop-off, pickup from the adjoining church here, et cetera. So it will mean greater use of the parking deck at the courthouse on a temporary basis, but I think it's just a short walk over, so I think we'll be fine. So.
It's a good time of year. It's the best time of year to make that walk, too.
Correct.
September and October.
So do you have a, I guess, a parking count as to how many spaces that each of those phases will be limited?
I don't have that handy.
Oh, no. I mean, did they give that to you, or you have the...
Yeah, we have the map with that information.
Oh, okay, good.
So that'll be supplied with the memo, and I'll make sure you have that before the end of today.
And obviously, we'll try to put this also in our newsletter.
Yes.
So that the jury public is aware.
Sure. I'll work with Brian to get that done.
All right, super. But throughout... You don't have to stick around... You don't have to stick around, we'll be talking about a bunch of other things, so. Don't feel you're not offending us.
I don't want to be rude.
No, not at all. I understand if I were you, I'd be heading out.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming in.
But this is fascinating stuff.
The wheels have gone. But throughout the process, the handicap access for the public will be maintained and not necessarily in the same location?
Not in the same location, certainly when we get to phase two, which will entail that current handicap parking area.
Yeah.
So we've got to work through that issue still as to how we're going to coordinate that, but we'll come up with a plan.
Okay.
So.
And did we, is there a final, Stephen, oh, Stephen is here. Is there a final layout for the drop boxes and things? I know that was a little bit.
Yes.
Implux.
Yes.
Where did we come down on all that?
I'll provide you with the drawing, the final drawing?
Great.
If that's okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But did, is it, is it a safe assumption that the handicap spots are moving from where they are now to around?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as we previously discussed.
Yep.
Yeah. And there'll be, I think we gain one or two additional handicap spots.
Two.
Two.
Two, okay, good.
Spirits of the past utilize our property for that week and then to access, go into the cemetery and so forth. And isn't?
Which week?
That's, I'm looking, I'm looking up on the calendar. It's like, I know it's.
A spirity time, like Halloween.
It's in September.
Probably right about the middle of these days.
Actually.
It's the 5th through the 7th.
The 5th through the 7th?
Look at 7.
5th through the 7th, got it. Thank you.
Oh, it's September, that's September.
It's September, oh, yeah, it's, yeah, in September. So I guess the.
Bill, that sidewalk that is on the side of the cemetery will not be touched.
Okay, but, but they park here and they line up them along that section and then walk over there. Will there be at least a pedestrian access between our parking lot and?
Sunday, is that?
It's the.
Sunday, is that a weekend or is that?
Oh, it's a weekend. They'll be, actually, they go on Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Weekend after Labor Day.
Yeah.
Fifth is a Thursday.
They do Thursday, Friday, Saturday, right?
Yeah.
So they're going to start on the third. It's going to be pre-mobilization will probably be the third or mobilization will be the third. I'm not sure how much we could keep, we could demo, we could ask them to demo that large section and then leave off this or leave off the main parking lot.
The Liberty Street side first?
They could demo that Liberty Street side and continue to have this parking lot.
So this would be intact that week?
Yeah, so long as they have pedestrian, and we can obviously limit their access, they just have to come in here.
Right.
On this, on the Broadway side. But it's really just making sure from this parking lot over to the cemetery and then, of course, the sidewalk is.
Right.
Okay.
We'll, we'll make sure there's access.
Okay, so, no, I just, yeah, one.
I've also reached out to the Showbiz, who has the lease on the auditorium. I notified them of the projects that were going to be happening and asked them to send me their event calendars, so we could better coordinate there.
They're, they're actually a partner on the Spirits of the Past also with the Historical Society.
Okay.
So.
Good.
All right. Good.
So we'll, and we'll send you a final version of that with the maps as we've just discussed, so. Second item, there's a property insurance related question. We had broken out the separate valuation for the 1841 courthouse after the renovation work was complete. They had previously lumped that in with the overall courthouse complex. There's a question about reproduction value versus replacement value for the historic courthouse. They offer reproduction value coverage through Corsa. There's an additional cost for that. There's an approximate $2900 differential between insuring it at the value of replacement or reproduction. So the question is, we need to notify Corsa as whether we want to pick up the reproduction value in our coverage or stick with replacement value.
The, and when you say the historic courthouse, we're talking just the?
Just the 1841 building, correct.
This is annual cost.
So replacement basically would mean it would, if something were to happen to that building and we lost it, we would not construct a building that looked like that.
It would be based on square footage, basically.
Correct.
Yeah.
It would be a new, modern, probably building, so.
I, I really think that for the, the value that provides just to the entire community, I think that would be a shame to, I think it would be short sighted of us to pretend that that's just square footage.
Right.
So I, I would opt for.
I agree.
Oh, a hundred percent, I agree, I agree.
All right.
I wonder how their actuaries determine that that, that would be the minimal cost to actually reproduce.
Well, that's, and that's what's interesting about it. You, you mentioned the premium difference, but the difference in construction cost is almost $6 million.
Yeah.
Based on their estimates. So that's money well spent should we ever.
Oh, I, I would agree. I would agree, actually, when you start looking at.
When the reproduction costs, are they talking about new materials making it look like this courthouse or is that?
Yes.
Is reproduction building it exactly like it is with?
Similar, yes.
It says and/or authentic materials, so that would be where the, the rub is, is like, do you want something? Yeah.
You want it to be, you want it to be passable for historic, I think is what we're doing.
Looks with just new, because if you can build this building without being wood structured, it would just be modern materials that would look just like it does now.
Well, they're saying this is $6 million difference between the two.
But probably even just for facia and things like that, that looks historic, you're spending a lot more.
Sure, sure.
For aesthetics at that point. Structurally, I would imagine it's a very modern process. And I would kind of want it to be that, too.
I find we never have to make that decision.
The hope is we don't have to reproduce.
For the added cost, it's worth it, just, okay.
Okay.
And that changes, I mean, that'll, that will change, their, their cost estimates will change year over year as well.
Correct.
Yeah, ease of mind, I'd rather do the reproduction cost, I agree.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
We'll notify Corsa then, thank you. Final discussion topic, if I could.
Can I ask, I'm sorry?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Back us right back up in the conversation we just left.
Sure.
Has that not been the case historically, that we haven't had a reproduction value on that?
Correct.
Okay.
Nor do I believe it was always offered.
Got it.
Us as an option, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a new one.
Yeah.
Interesting.
And it's, it's, obviously, there are many historic courthouses in the state of Ohio who are members of Corsa and counties. So I think they've run this by every county and we had a, we had to redo the valuation and split it off, so it took a little more time, but.
Now, who would have lost a historic courthouse recently? I'm trying to.
I don't know, hopefully no one.
That's how Corsa gets into, they get, right, they get into the details and get one like, okay, we probably ought to offer that.
My.
I'm just trying to think.
Well, they tore theirs down.
They tore that on purpose.
But they had a fire shortly thereafter, yeah, anyway.
So I can see where eventually they need to get into it. Is this, is it a consequence, say, yeah, there's a difference between replacement as well as, yeah, okay, got it, restoration. Cool, all right.
Final, ARPA allocation.
Oh, I didn't.
Right.
If I might.
I didn't bring the sheet they gave us.
Yeah, I didn't bring my sheet out.
But I can summarize real quickly for you.
Okay.
There are obviously the two pots of the ARPA funding, the traditional side, and then there's the revenue replacement side. On the traditional side, there is a current balance available of about $333,000. And on the replacement side, balance of $562,000, total of approximately $895,000. As you know, last fall, we had discussions about allocating additional ARPA dollars and decisions were made about the bar screen project in Hinckley, some of our rooftop equipment for the admin building, human service center and prosecutor building and a couple of the sheriff's projects. You budgeted for the replacement rooftop equipment, $1 million. Two of those have been presented to you by resolution, those contracts with Gardner for the admin building and prosecutor building. Stephen has now provided us with the final quote for human services center and it's come in significantly higher than we anticipated. And we are now in excess of that million dollars that had been budgeted for those three projects by $297,000. So we have a current need, if we were to move forward with the human service center contract, to come up with an additional $300,000 approximately.
Which takes traditional, pretty much.
Or it could, or it could be revenue replacement.
It could be either side, right? But, yeah, if it were to come off the traditional side, that would leave a, just a balance of about $33,000. We also, as you know, we have to obligate these remaining funds by the end of this year. Doesn't have to be fully expended until the end of '26. I've asked Stephen to give us some indication as to what other projects there may be that we had not funded that would be probably a priority if we were to move and defer into next year's capital improvement budget. And he has identified two projects. One would be the replacement of the elevator in this building and the replacement of the elevator in the human service center. The total for those two combined is $600,000.
Wow.
Which one's more expensive?
They're equal.
Admin?
Oh.
I would have figured that.
Admin's $20,000 more.
Is that just because of the age of the equipment here?
I think the, if I have to take a while, it's got to get to it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the admin is $285, human service center, $265. There's an additional 50 combined for the interior finish. There is also, after our discussion yesterday, Stephen, there's also some individual HVAC units on the first floor of this building that are not affected or impacted or benefiting from the rooftop project here. And those are individual units that serve planning, tax maps, recorder, economic development. Estimated cost for those four would be $200,000.
On the elevator, you said the useful life, is it between 30 and 35 years or is it, it said 35 dash 30, is that a type of?
This came, this came from Zach Case from Coney. I think it's, I think it should be 30 to 35 years.
Oh, okay.
I can confirm that, but I do believe that is called a life expectancy of a hydraulic.
Well, we can't do all three, so.
That's correct.
What is your priority, one elevator and the HVAC?
And some of the HVAC.
That would be my priority.
That's your priority.
You'd be kind of phasing those in anyway, the HVAC, right? I mean, you wouldn't do the HVAC all, with all those in as one contract?
Yeah, we would do them as one contract.
Okay, all right.
Bring them in, yeah, because they're all very similar units, we would order all four of them at the same time.
Got it.
They would be replaced one at a time, but they would, it would be.
Now, these are units, you were anticipating longer term in terms of the capital.
Yes.
Program in the past, okay.
So with the increase in your.
For those individual units, yeah.
With the $300,000 increase in your other project, plus one elevator, plus the HVAC units approximately, what do we got left?
$1.
Well, I, mind if I jump in on?
No, please do.
I did make sure we, I talked to, a couple of months ago during the housing network was brought to my attention that we have a house, basically it's the fund that goes for providing for those that needed for short-term hotels. And it's various funding source, I asked Skip to give me some information, provided it for you. What it comes down to is by, they're going to run out of money by the end of this year. These are people that normally would have been going to our shelter, our shelter doesn't open up till January. They would qualify for a traditional ARPA because you're helping people that are likewise homeless. And I think he was talking, and, and like Skip, he then provided me also a list of all the other things he needs.
Sure, sure.
But he says to, to balance out the rest of the year, which you're talking about, well, I'll just say during the holidays, literally, and because the rates have gone up, about $30,000.
Correct.
And so my hope is we could, if we could squirrel away $30,000 to help provide, make sure that over the holidays, nobody's going to go homeless. First part of the year, the emergency shelter will be open, in which case we wouldn't have that expense. But I think at this point, if we can squeeze out $30,000 from this list.
No.
About $60,000 left.
60 left?
You'd have 60 left after if we fund the one elevator.
$350,000.
The admin elevator.
$750,000. $780,000.
And HVAC for this plus the lower portion, we'd have a little less than 100 left, minus 30 for the hotel assistance program until the shelter gets running. You'd be left with like about 60.
Could we put a pause on, for a week till I get ahold of the fair people to see, for the remainder of Brett's math?
Okay.
Just a, a pause, not a pause on this, but a pause on the remaining 60 till, they said they were going to try to get ahold of me after the fair.
Oh, okay, sure, sure, okay.
Put a pause on a little bit, a week or two.
So he makes us choose between the fair and, never mind.
No, 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 minus your 30.
Okay, oh, okay, good, good.
30's in there, 30's in there.
All right.
Yeah, no, I'm talking 60 and change minus the 30, correct?
Brett, were you just?
60 would be what's remaining after the 30.
After the 30.
Oh, after the 30.
Okay, good, all right, good, good.
Okay, okay.
Excellent, so that'd be sufficient.
I was assuming the 30.
Okay, good, all right.
So if we do all, I'm in favor of the list.
And were you using the admin elevator because it's the higher number?
Because it's a higher number.
Yeah.
Got it.
Because I, I don't know that that's a foregone conclusion that we'd do this one over JFS and.
It's, it's the older.
Is it, it is, okay.
Yeah, and you, you really feel anymore when the doors close. Am I getting up there?
Well, the, the one in JFS is a little.
Well, it's, it's human service center, not JFS.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Human service building.
So that's a 246 north one.
Yeah. So, but that one is a little bit more critical with the OOA over there and, I mean, if that one moves that one.
Yeah, based on the clientele that are in that building.
Yeah.
They probably use that elevator.
Quite a bit.
Frequently.
Yes.
So.
But does that one have a better up history than the one here?
They're both, I've been told by Coney that they're both struggling right now. This one has had more struggles because of the outdated equipment that's powering and dishing it here.
here.
We've had multiple failures of this elevator, I mean, not to an extreme, but.
Yeah.
People have been unable to exit, so.
Could you go ahead and give us a rundown of all the costs and everything here for us to consider?
I can provide you with a summary.
Yes, a summary.
And then we can further discuss next week, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yep, great.
Yep, thank you.
All right, I will send an email then of the timing expediency.
All right.
That we have, if anybody else is interested in something else.
I mean, and that's, that shouldn't be news, because it's ARPA dollars, it was going to be ARPA dollars.
I was already very clear that we had timing issues, yes.
Yeah, there's a deadline. But we're, I'm, I'm interested to hear what they need, too.
I think that's it, unless you have anything else for me?
Nope.
Oh, and I've not yet heard back from the Park District on their ARPA agreements, so, which is still out there.
Oh, yeah, that's a lot of money.
It was last May.
Yeah.
That you had communication with them.
If that's the culture, you may have your second elevator.
That's 400,000, wasn't it?
He may have a second elevator.
400,000, correct.
Well, they've already hired their contractor.
I believe it was a design-build project, and they've already awarded the contract, so.
Okay.
Just letting you know that that's still hanging out there, so hopefully we'll have a resolution to that, moving forward.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
Give them a lot of opportunity to.
But at some point, I think you're, it's going to have to, there's going to have to be a decision if we don't receive anything.
Agreed, okay.
So, because we don't want to turn that money back, I'm assuming, right?
Hundred percent.
No.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Very good.
Thank you, Chris.
Brett, do you have anything, anything else, Stephen? Matt, anything, all right.
Okay.
Kelly?
I do not.
Erin?
Nothing, I guess I, you ready for your motion?
No, no, we actually have to talk about December meeting schedule.
That was in there.
Christmas Eve is the 24th, Christmas Day, the 25th is Tuesday, is Wednesday, so we've got that, and of course, 31st being New Year's Eve, how we want to handle.
I have thoughts.
And what, the week between, what's your thoughts?
Well, just from being recorder, you know, everybody stays open the 31st for under the year closing, so auditor and treasurer are going, I mean, and auditor and recorder are going to have to be open with tax maps, so I, you know, I think we should not close on New Year's Eve, I think the more appropriate date to close, especially for those employees who potentially have vacation and could go the weekend before, and take Monday and Tuesday off and stay with their families for Christmas, I think if we're going to not have a meeting, I think Christmas Eve is the one that makes the most sense, and then have Matt approve bills, you know what I mean, that week, bills and payroll.
So we would basically cancel the commissioner's meeting on the 24th, and not have one that week.
That would be my choice.
But have a, basically, a.
End of the year one.
End of the year and 31st.
Makes perfect sense.
Agreed?
Yep.
All right, Rhonda, you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Rhonda reminds us always about the calendar conflicts well in advance, she's very good at that.
You've got to plan ahead.[1665.13]